When we make a loan at West Tennessee Bank, we're helping to build a stronger community, and so can you. By choosing West Tennessee Bank, you keep your money right here at home where local people benefit most. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
Here's the floor presence. We have a way to say to the meeting of the motion, the gentleman, the president, the new administration, all the favors, the ayes, the noes, the agreed, the disagreed. So then we will move on to our celebrations.
Well, our first celebration is Mr. Presley. Again, if you are not aware, of course, we had to keep this information embargoed for several weeks. Nail-biting experience for us because we like to talk and brag. But Presley was recognized by the Tennessee School Board Association at our Fall District Regional Meeting as the Student Recognition Award. So it's an honor that we received that we had, I don't know when the last time Chester County student has been recognized for that honor. And she is also in competition for the state award. Has anything happened yet with that?
Not yet. I'll get to it.
Well, obviously, she will not be a miss with the opportunity to interview. If you don't know who Presley belongs to, look at the one that's smiling the biggest thing they can see. He will give it away, but this is the daughter of Shane and Stacy. So you have the floor.
All right. Well, I haven't figured it out. My name is Presley Connor. I'm a senior at Chester County High School, been in this school system since kindergarten. So born and raised, homegrown Chester County. And for this award, really kind of the process you have to go through to receive it is it's any upcoming senior can be nominated by your school board. Thanks, Dad. To receive this award. And so I was actually nominated back in May. And so every county in our district for the school board can nominate a student to go on to compete for this regional award. And so I was nominated in May, filled out my application, and then on my application, it asked me things about like community service, leadership projects I've been a part of, and things like that. And I'll sort of explain more of what I put on there. And so I applied for it, sent it in, and most of the things, it was like list up to 10 activities. So I'm like, list in 10 activities. And then it's like, list, you know, every leadership position you've been in. So I'm going back to 4th grade, 4H. I'm covering everything I can because I'm competitive. And so I applied, and over the summer, I was on a mission trip in Connecticut, and I got the email that I had received the award. And so I was so excited, I wanted to start telling everybody. And like Dr. Kildare said, I scrolled down to the bottom and it said embargoed till Fall District Meeting. And I'm like, you know, biting my nails because I want to tell. I'm excited. And so we just recently had the Fall District Meeting where I was recognized, and so they gave me this fancy little plaque here. Probably hard to see, but it does read, "TSBA 2018 Student Recognition Award, Presley Connor, Chester County, Southwest District." And so now that I have won our district award, there are, it's me plus eight other students across Tennessee who have this award in their hands right now. And so all of us are moving on to the state level, and we're competing for a $2,000 scholarship and recognition at the annual statewide Tennessee School Board Convention. And so I just had my interview for that last week, and they asked me, you know, honestly, some of those questions, you kind of think are like basic interview questions, but nobody ever really knows how to answer them. So I was thinking, you know, they asked me things about what I want to be, what I want to do whenever I get out of high school. They asked me a lot about my application because my main things I focused on in my application is community service because I find my joy in seeing other people's joy. And so I focused a lot on our work with the Student Health Council, with SAD, which if you don't know, is Students Against Destructive Decisions. I focused a lot on BETA because I'm the Tennessee State BETA Secretary, and our whole motto is lead by serving others. And so I think it's no coincidence that one of my questions was describe a servant leader. And so I got to go on the whole BETA route because I'm all BETA, BETA, BETA. And one of the questions they did ask me was talk about a teacher who's impacted your life. And that was probably the toughest question they asked just because my favorite teacher did just pass. But it was a good way to, you know, show that it's not just the student who's winning this award, it's every educator and faculty member behind him. Because I couldn't have done this or even got to the point where I am without everyone in this room, plus those outside these walls that show up every day to support their students. So haven't heard anything yet from the state. Fingers crossed, but either way, I'm really thankful for this opportunity to start Chester County through community service and to represent our county in the Southwest District as your Student of the Year.
I don't know where she goes with the phone. Thank you, President. We also, one of the has Julie Miller.
Well, Julie Miller, these are one of the positive messages that WBBJ gets right. We have so much negativity trying to bring Chester Countyans down in their view of what, how effective schools look. Julie was the bright spot for the East Chester crowd when we had a lot of drama going on that week. It probably didn't get the airtime that was needed, so I want to make sure that with Mary here and independent, we're going to get the necessary airtime at East Chester. Julie is an educator at East Chester, teaching 4th grade. And Julie, and again, she is one that has been just teaching, what, this is her 4th year. So we're very proud of that recognition. Also in the board package, and I do want to, before Julie comes up, I want to make sure that we are very proud of Julie. She was the first one recognized, well, for this school year, but in the previous years, these are the ones that have been recognized from Chester County Schools through WBBJ's program. Wes McPeak, when he was at the high school, got recognized last school year. Kathy Whitehead at West Chester. Carrie Cherry at Jacks Creek. Melinda Anderson, when she was at East Chester. Were other teachers in our school district that have been recognized as Teachers of the Week for the West Tennessee area, coverage area for WBBJ. So Julie's going to come up, give you a little glimpse of what she does with her babies, and shows us why she's the Teacher of the Week.
I have no idea why I'm Teacher of the Week. Absolutely no idea. When I got so excited, I get overly excited anyway because Kim has to put up with me. When I got the email and Mr. Kildare asked me to speak, I got really excited about it and I started sharing that with my friends. I'm like, oh, I wish I could speak before me. And they're like, well, ask them where our tip bonuses are. No, I'm going to keep this positive. I have to do that.
You're advocating for your folks, that's okay.
I can't, I can't speak for any other school, faculty, administration, except for East Chester. I've only been teaching 4 years. God bless me, 11 days after I graduated with a phone call from Kim Scott. I know so many of y'all's faces, and y'all know me, this is a small town. But one of the things that I'll have to say that I believe separates us from so many other places is number one, at this school system, still isn't scared about 10. We've got Christian people, we've got a Christian superintendent, we have Christian administrations who are not afraid to bow their head and pray for our students, and pray for our teachers, and pray for our schools. And then honestly, when you, when you send out an email in Chester County and say, y'all, I need prayer, there's actually heads bound, there's hearts going to the throne for you. I think that's one of the main things that sets us apart. Unlike a lot of other teachers, when I meet my parents, I give them my personal cell phone number. There you go. We're a team. Let's do this good. Whether it's victories, whether it's struggles, whether they have concerns, I want them to feel like they can come to me. I don't close that door because I think without that communication, we close a gap that could be the avenue of success for our children. Just today, for instance, I have a child in my room, new to the district, came from a northern state, Illinois. The child does have some exceptionalities, and up there, he was stuck in a sped room all the time. This child is highly functioning. This child doesn't need to be in any, he needs full inclusion, as much as possible. He is flourishing. It's beautiful. I love it. There's nothing better. When you have administration who back you, who love you, who pray for you, when you have a school board and superintendents who love you, back you, pray for you, then as an educator, you can go out there and really, really make a difference. And the difference that gets made is the relationships. I don't believe that we can do anything, they, what is it, Ms. Kim said, that they won't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And that's, that's just the truth. We don't live in a closed off, every man for himself place. We live still in small-town USA, thank you, Lord, where everybody still cares about everybody. So we get in there every day, and I expect them to learn, and I push them to learn, and I push them to do their best. And some of them think I'm mean, and there's a lot, Ms. Kim, poor thing, she's had to put up with parents fussing about me. I don't know how I write this. I really don't. Except for that I care and love and pour myself into every one of those children. They're holy, they're humans. It's not a number of me. I mean, they know that I think I'm going to be a 3 this year. That hurts me. I was a 5 last year. But it don't hurt me nearly as bad as to think that I failed one of those children. That's what bothers me. My level of effectiveness and all this state stuff, I could have made a slideshow with the extra time I've got now that I don't have to do portfolios. But I felt like it was just better since we all know one another. I grew up here, y'all grew up, most everybody. There's a few transplants, but you grow to love this place. And this school system shows, it shows we're not everybody else. We're far above and beyond it. And I pray that we always stay that way. I think it's a team effort. Some parent out there nominated me. There's a few folks I see, you know, voting for me to get, I don't care about all that. I mean, it's nice. What I love is the fact that I get to teach. This is not something I have to do. I get to teach in Chester County. So thank y'all for letting me talk now.
I would like to say congratulations, Julie. And also you can go on WBBJ's website and vote for Julie. You can vote once a day, so let's give her a lot of support because, as she says, she's our Chester County person. All right, next thing on the agenda is our contract for superintendent. It expired on June 30 of 2019. And at this time, I sent out a letter just to the guys asking that we have a three-year new contract for superintendent. That's what I would like to see, and that is open for discussion. I'll make that motion. I second. We have a motion to second for a three-year contract. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Polls, no? Okay, that passes. Get a break. We need to roll call vote? Okay, well, Charlie was yes, so that would be a three-year contract. Congratulations, sir. And I did ask Troy to send out some things that he's accomplished since being on board with superintendent. And a couple of things that I just thought was really impressive, our ACTP scores are higher than most of our surrounding counties that we're comparing to. And also the action of, I don't know, those people who think this is good, we actually spend less per student, but we achieve higher than these people in other counties. So I think we did a really good job. Just had Troy give a brief note. All right, next thing, we have some policies, and Troy, I'll let you come discuss that, please.
Okay, these policies that you see before you are recommendations from the TSBA with, again, the most recent legal action statement. It's their effort to revise and refine what was there already. In some of these cases, these policies are new policies to us. These are the ones that will be under your heading for Section Number 5 on your board package. If you have any questions about anyone in particular, you can consider me.
This is all works and services.
Correct, yes.
Make a motion. We approve the policy revisions recommended as recommended by the TSBA. Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the policy that the TSBA recommends. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Polls, no? Those are included. We also have a policy, I believe, a different one.
Yes.
Troy.
Yes. This is a policy I'm recommending for the board to accept. This came from, and again, the policy read is, "We were with Policy 6.701, which was recorded as student solicitations and fundraising in our existing policy. To change that to Policy 2.601, which is just titled Fundraising Activities. You've received a copy of what we have currently in our policy, that's 6.701, and the new, well, it's a new policy to us, but it's been on the board of the TSBA's policy draft for a few years." What we received this summer was some conversations with the Tennessee State Comptroller's Office, and it was focused on an increased number of online solicitations, including items that we use in our district called Donors Choose, and some may have, or looked at GoFundMe. We wanted to make sure that what we had existing in our board package, our board policies, would be reflective of what the current trend is with these online solicitations. And what I have here in this Policy 2.601 is primarily what the TSBA offers in their draft. However, I did add some language to it, and there's also with that a procedural page for when we choose, Donors Choose, as far as identifying that anything, equipment-wise or things that are funneled through to the teachers' classrooms, to the schools, that come through Donors Choose, it is the property of the school district. It is not for the use of that teacher. But if the teacher so chooses to leave our school district, then that property stays in the possession of the school district itself. And that was consistent with Donors Choose anyway. The language that I have for you to review was just the procedural language that I got off of another school district's website that had that included. Some districts were refusing to do any online solicitation, but because of the use that we had already had with our fundraising activity requests, I felt like that that would not be the right direction to go because there is no exchange of funds, money in hand. It is the products of what we get requested that end up in the teachers' classrooms, and we've had some teachers all across the district who have benefited from that. So it's my recommendation that we accept that Policy 2.601 and replace it instead of the Policy 6.701. That would be removed.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve this fundraising activity policy 2.601. All the other discussions? All the others, ayes? All in favor, say aye. Next thing on the agenda is going to be recommendations for revision of our five-year plan, and Troy, I'll let you co-sign.
Okay. As you gentlemen remember, from what we did back in April of this year, we had a new revision to our existing five-year plan to be aligned to now the 2018-2023 five-year cycle. Also was mentioned at the Fall Regional Meeting, the TSBA, that now in, and that's one of the policies that we included in our board pack, that every two years, we're going to be required to update our five-year plan. That was an earlier policy that you recommended. As we have been in the district office reviewing it, Randall came across, Randall Fenimore came across this one specific objective, that we need to correct the language in to adhere to. And it is going back, and as it reflects on yours, you should have a copy of the five-year plan. On page 5 of that five-year plan, it reads, "In Objective 3, all students will meet or exceed achievement and growth measures recommended by the State Department of Education group subgroup." That objective will stand, but if you notice, the strategy number 6, it reads right now, "Provide transportation to students in the lower grades to extended day programs." With that specific language, we are still going to offer that service as we can. And if you notice from the new language that I'm asking you to consider for revision to that strategy, as resources are available. Now, those resources have nothing to do with the bus. The buses are available. It has absolutely nothing to do with the fuel cost. It has everything to do with having drivers. So as long as we have sufficient number of drivers, we will offer that strategy. But we did not want to have a strategy there that we could not adhere to because it's a blade and brick and speak to it if needed of our, for the last month-plus shortfall we've had to have additional bus drivers because of the shortfall. We have some new bus drivers that just started even today. So we are in better shape than we were a week ago or a month ago. But we wanted to make sure it doesn't change the commitment that we're making that after doing programs, we're going to provide transportation. But it will give us the opportunity to say as much as we have available with resources, and that would be right now, bus drivers, qualified certified bus drivers.
Troy, I agree to change the wording, but as you said, we will make effort to still provide the service. I think we should.
We did that service this summer with Kim Scott and Amy Woolley's school through that summer read the Be Ready program. We had two buses that ran during the summer. It's easy to do during the summer because you don't have the commitment to the routes to meet. So, and these routes are extended in length because when you have two buses that are canvassing the entire school district, it takes a little while longer than the normal. Hour and a half.
Correct.
Correct, exactly.
Have we ever looked at sacred time?
For our schools? Yes, we have. We hadn't done anything more than look at it. Our effort, Britt and I have talked about it multiple times, and I've talked to a few of you board members about that specifically, about options. Because when you, you can't create bus drivers who are certified out of thin air. So now we're in better shape than we were, like I said, a week ago, a month ago. But we would have to have our options open when we cannot, when we cannot meet our current needs.
Okay, that's true. Second.
It does.
Those are some of our.
That's correct. Those are some of the pros and the cons. That being a con.
Do I have a motion for you to amend both of the change? Is six. Okay, I have a motion to second to change the language. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. On all the other things, we had some updates. Troy, I'll let you speak to that. We had a couple of plans in the new classroom.
Again, of course, if you're not aware, for those who are not frequent flyers with high school, the new cafeteria addition that's on the north end is open for business. We've had that open since September the 5th. They have given us a 90-day temporary certificate of occupancy, the fire marshal has, until we get the East Hall extension complete. I know from talking to my children that they're using it. I guess that everybody's excited about it. Doc, Cap, Professor. Now, the East, the East Hall Edition is still under construction. I have been out there this week, but the language that you have in your board packets reflect what was shared to me by the fire marshal earlier this month, or actually it's the end of August. But expectations for the work ahead, it could be, it could be ready for occupation before the deadline of the first semester, rather than claiming what it would be. We're just going to know better when we get a little bit further down the road. But we are going to plan, talking to Dr. Kaplan, we're going to plan an open house for everybody to come out and visit in the community to see. This is, I would say, well-spent tax dollars that have been afforded to our school district from that sales tax base, and I'm sure everybody will enjoy seeing the opportunities, hopefully in the tenure that Dr. Kaplan and I will be working here, that we won't have to consider adding on again. This will meet our needs for the, for the rest of our career.
That's right.
Exactly, exactly. We're getting close to being landlocked.
Are we going to rest the ground for the cafeteria addition?
You know, that's something we'll put on the docket to look at. We have, from previous board action, had more ownership at the central office. Sarah has been the one staring at me, but she's been the one that's been, she and I have met several times with the rentals, and we have, again, from the last board action back, I would say, February, March of last school year, April, that we have raised the rates to be more competitive. Those rates have not changed for several years. We have some that are using those, that have already committed to rent, Mr. Tommy Kirk's place at Williams and Dr. Kaplan's place. So, but I don't know if we have added anything for that cafeteria addition. I don't think we have, as far as our rental.
If you do think that, don't you charge it for cafeteria anyway? It's only 75.
Yeah, that's what you buy at sale.
For 75. I mean, that's what the cafeteria is. The bigger area.
Cafeteria is 75 right now. It was, it was 50 before. We raised it.
75.
It is, still raises. Yeah, we raised it at that board meeting, 75. The GM is now 100, and the auditorium is 100 for rent. I just remember those numbers off the top of my head.
We talked about raising the board. We update this.
That can happen as much as you need, I mean, as frequent as we need to discuss it, it can be brought up. It just says the board will periodically consider the rates. So that's an easy agenda addition in the future. Would you like to put it on the next month's agenda?
I would need to raise it until we get it redone. What, cafeteria, oh, no. Cafeteria addition? I thought you were talking about the whole trouble. Cafeteria. We will get it. I think that and board, anything else that you can discuss. Troy?
They just found the safety deal, you know, putting new walls up into the schools and stuff like that, is that?
Well, we started initial discussions with fire marshals supporting giving this. And now, you talked to Tommy, we got the revision, we have that with the architect to see the fire marshal, but I turned in the grant and it's approved, so I'll use drawings and approval. The funding that we have would be for the construction of providing another level of security for these open lobby areas that we know that have been, they served us fine in the past, just like this one, exactly. But we need to upgrade it for the future. And I know, I don't think Randall was here, but there is, you failed, you completed a title grant to.
The title grant to get the architectural done, and the Safe Schools Grant, the one-time monies to.
Right. So we've got money set aside in our title program that we can pay for the architect, so it's not coming off of this funding stream. so it's not coming off of this, this funding stream. I'm still waiting for a quote from Barker. Well, they were already at that point before it was made, to remain clear. But I've got, I had a conversation with him through email just yesterday, and he's waiting for some information by, I can't remember off the top of my head, the person. Again, what you've always received here is that the walls, separation walls, it's going to be about $4,000 price tag. And I've already given approval for that based on the conversation. But we're still waiting on a final quote from them. Now, the doors themselves will have a window in it. It'll be a two by three, is that right?
Small.
Four windows. There are four windows needed. Well, that's what Doc said. So it's last four on the south side.
Before we adjourn, I have to announce that next minute, October 25th, Thursday, so I'm going to throw that out. We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Second.
Close seven, all in favor, adjourn, say aye.
Aye.